Welcome. President Ortiz, would you like to lead us in the flag?
Yes. The flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as strong.
As a member ours.
Here.
And Councilmember Luke Azee.
Here.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Councilmember Doish.
Here.
And Mayor Bryan.
President. Tonight, we have special guests, folks from the Siskiyou Economic Development and/or the TBIT Discover Siskiyou Group are going to be giving a presentation. You guys can come to the podium, make sure you're near the microphone when speaking to folks on Zoom. We've seen a lot of you guys in the last two years. It's wonderful to see everyone in person again.
Okay, good. How's the mic? Sorry about the feedback.
Congratulations on motherhood.
Thank you, I brought a plus one, you'll see today. So, we want to thank Dunsmere because during COVID and following COVID, you guys were very agile in having us present through Zoom, so thank you for that. It's great to be here, though, now in person to provide our quarterly update. My name is Corey Hayden, and I'm a program manager at the Siskiyou E C. I think I've worked there four years now, and you'll also hear from my colleagues today as well, Quentin Gaddy and Heather Dodd. So, you'll hear most unique information from my colleagues and just a little bit of general anecdotal information from me. And so, first of all, we don't necessarily do this at every council, but I do want to invite this council in particular for your location and your hospitality to us, to our economic summit. It's every fall. Our annual economic summit is held in McCloud, which is, I think, a sister city in terms of location for you and not a far travel, and it'll be on Monday, November 7th, from 3:00 to 5:00. And so, it is almost a showcase of our work in terms of it's hosted by our board, and several members of our board are businesses in Dunsmere, that being Louie Dewey of K Springs Resorts and Kit Marshall of Castle Rock Water. So, they are part of the hosting committee of the programming of this evening. The evening will feature business vignettes and stories over the past year, greetings from state officials who want to share their goodwill and good nature for Siskiyou County's businesses and industries and our work, and a keynote speaker and great food. So, I will make sure that we follow up with an email invitation on that evening, but we would love to see you there on Monday, November 7th.
Excuse me, where?
Axon Rose in the Cloud, so just a few miles down the road. So, we look forward to hosting that evening. In addition, some things that I can share is we are always gracious for your MOU investment in our work. Cities and the county from across Siskiyou share a united MOU for Economic Development Services. And so, part of our reporting tonight and quarterly is to let you know how your investment is going. So, some ways that you see that investment at work is part of the Small Business Development Center, which you'll hear from Quentin, which is a program that mitigates unemployment across the county and every region, and is very much at work here in Dunsmere, which you'll hear from Quentin. Often, you'll hear about our Brownfields Program, and so, that is our ability to provide funding for any real or perceived contamination on sites that you care about getting back into industry or business. And so, we have funding available to do Phase 1 assessments on sites to learn more. If you would like to see a property that is not currently in use, return to use. So, I always like to mention the Brownfields Program. We have been very, very interested in our food economy lately. That is everything from items procured or bottled here, like Castle Rock Water is a great example, to produce at our farmers markets, chocolate, beer, wine, beef. And so, we have introduced Siskiyou Farm Co. into the marketplace, and so, you can visit siskiufarmco.com online to see what it's all about. But it is like shopping for local food products, the same way you might shop on Etsy or Amazon. So, you have the opportunity to browse several producers and add items to your cart with one easy checkout. And the way that you get your items is you can pick them up in a customized packaged box with your flowers and your wine and your shakes and your pyroelastic chocolates, which come from weed, all together on Wednesdays. And the closest site to you right now is Mount Shasta, so I hope that's good news. And we continue to be adding sites as the program grows. So, right now, we have 80 beta testers testing the site, experiencing it, checking out and picking up, and then giving us feedback. So, we certainly invite council and any community members in Dunsmere to engage with siskiufarmco.com. We think it's really fun and great for the food brands of Siskiyou County. We're very proud. When you put it all together and you see what's available here, Northbound Coffee is another example of a product that's there. We hear it's the best price that you can find Northbound Coffee at. So, those were the two things I wanted to mention was that the MOU investment is one reason why we report here. We're very, very gracious. We're also looking forward to working with your new city manager. Hello, Dustin, I'm Corey. It's nice to meet you in person. Thank you for your email correspondence this week. I appreciated it. We are always grant-seeking, grant-writing on behalf of Siskiyou County. We do try to put forth competitive applications for state and federal funding so that those funders have Siskiyou County priorities at front of mind. So, we are able to submit competitive and compelling applications on behalf of our region that we are very, very proud of. If you ever have any questions about that, we can certainly answer them. So, with my invitation to several opportunities extended, I'm going to turn the microphone over to my colleague Quentin Gaddy, who specializes in the Small Business Development Center and the Micro Assistance Grant Program. Quentin?
Thank you, Corey. Thanks for putting me in touch with Jason.
You're welcome. Am I close enough? Can you pick me up? Okay, awesome. So, I'll start with the Small Business Development Center, and I'll sort of do a refresher of what it is and what we do there. So, as many of you are aware, I took over the Small Business Development Center in January this year. I've been running it into the ground ever since, but we do a lot of really engaging work in the community with the SBDC. And so, we do everything from helping businesses just get started from the get-go. So, everything from getting their licenses, their permits, incorporating if they choose to do so at the state level, and navigating all of that for existing businesses. We help them develop and augment their marketing plans, their sales plans. We provide them location-based data for their physical brick-and-mortar shops that can show them foot traffic as it fluctuates throughout the year, throughout the day even. So, we provide all these different services to small businesses throughout the county, and oftentimes, we're known as the best-kept secret, and we're trying to change that prerogative. We want folks to know who the Small Business Development Center is, how small businesses can get help, what help looks like, what kind of resources. So, in this last year, we helped Siskiyou County businesses close close to $4 million in capital financing. The exact number is 3.7 million. In the city of Dunsmere, we work with 32 clients, 16 actively within the last year of the capital raised last year, 360,000 came from the city of Dunsmere. And we also look at jobs, we look at increases in sales, we look at other things too, like, you know, helping businesses just get set up on payroll, you know, especially there's a lot of businesses who operate under the table, and they want to get legit, they want to get everything on their taxes, they just don't have the skills needed, and we provide that assistance. We always take referrals, we don't charge for any of our services. We're funded by the USSBA in the state of California, and so, we're able to take referrals from council members at any time. So, if you know any businesses who need help and they don't know about us, point them our way.
Secrets out.
Secrets out, that's the goal.
What's your relationship with Jedi?
We have a very collaborative, we try to complement and augment each other's services. If I was to sort of summarize it, Jedi can be a little more hands-on for a lot of the nascent-stage clients, the ones who need just as much coaching and reassurance as they do financial assistance. Oftentimes, a lot of clients quote-unquote graduate from Jedi, and then they come over to me. I'll give you an example. I started working with a Jedi client about three months ago, who'd been working with them on developing her business plan, her marketing plan, and she then went over to us. We helped her develop three-year pro formas for her financials, and she closed an SBA 504 loan for commercial property for $780,000 just last week, on the 28th actually, is when the loan closed. And so, that can show you how one client can come from Jedi and then come up to us. And so, when it gets to talking with a bank, either Nina or Trish at Jedi will usually loop me in with their client and then refer them over to the SPD. Thank you. Moving on to the CDBG CV1 program, so this is the micro enterprise program on behalf of the entire county that Dunsmere has been administering. And so, we started with a budget of $670,000. We have spent $400,000 so far of that, so that leaves us about $270,000. And this contract runs through June of next year, and so, we are on track to draw this fund down all the way. So far, we've assisted and funded, fully funded, 20 micro enterprises with these funds. We have five in the queue who are going to go out this next month. Monia will be issuing the checks in a few weeks. We have four that are sort of in a standby phase where either their documents are incomplete or they haven't been registered on SAM.gov, but they're eligible to be funded. And then, there have been five that have been declined for ineligibility, either because they didn't meet the program guidelines or they were not income-qualified. So, they made too much money to participate in the program. Of all those businesses, five have been in the city of Dunsmere and have received $75,000 in grant funds. There's one in queue and one sort of in standby where I haven't received all the documents from them, and so, that's where we stand with that program. Once we draw down all the funds with those, we're going to transition to the CDBG Dunsmere Micro Enterprise Grant. We have three prospective clients in that program lined up so far, two of which were participants of the CDBG CV1 for COVID impact, but we're going to be looking at using this program for some significant investments, particularly in kitchen infrastructure, things like freezers, grills, cooking equipment, stuff like that. And so, for this program, we are putting together a loan advisory committee to approve all of those grant submissions, and the committee is going to be apprised of Dustin and Blake from the city, myself, and two members of the public. I believe the proposed members we have right now are Len Foreman and Mark Rowley. And that program's slated to run through June 2024. Upon 50% expenditure of the program, we can apply to the state for more money to keep it a revolving program, and I think it's in the hopes of a lot of people to direct some of that money particularly towards revitalizing downtown and getting more brick-and-mortar shops in a lot of those vacant buildings.
So, could you reiterate the overall amount in our program?
Yeah, that's going to be a quarter million in total, of which about 200 of that is going to be sequestered straight for businesses.
I do have one question, I do want to raise this. Is Mark Rowley still involved with the city? I thought he kind of pulled back.
He's loose in the chamber. We just mentioned him.
So, I don't think we have any contract or like anything set up yet. This is just what has been proposed, what I'm sort of continuing on, but we'll formalize everything. Last but not least, I really want to give a big shout-out to the city of Dunsmere staff, particularly Blake, Monia, and Wendy. They've just been phenomenal to work with, they're super quick at getting back to me with anything, their documents are always perfect. I'm more likely to make a mistake than them, and they catch me on my mistakes, and they keep me straight. So, for that, I'm very thankful for them. Last but not least, some other updates is there's been some rumblings and some inklings at the state about reforms for fire insurance, and so, this is something we're following very, very closely. This is something that affects Dunsmere businesses perhaps more than anything else right now. There are so many businesses that I hear from that either get denied outright from fire insurance, or their rates are through the roof, and they're like, do we just skip a year and maybe get it next year and take our chances? Those are serious considerations that business owners are taking right now, and so, we're looking at getting those stories. If you have any up to the state, we send them to the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, and we send them to our legislators, to both the dollies. And so, if you know of any businesses who have struggled with fire insurance, please let us know. With that, thank you if there are any other questions. If not, I'm going to hand it off to Heather to talk about.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Quentin, for your work over the last couple of years. With the 250,000 in our own micro enterprise program, are the restrictions the same as the COVID micro enterprise?
No, they're actually open, they're opened up quite a bit, so there doesn't have to be any kind of COVID nexus, so to speak, so we can apply it to startups as well. The underwriting standards are going to be looked at a little differently with that program. So, the COVID program, we're treating it straight as a recovery. The Dunsmere program, we have that option if there is a COVID nexus, but we would underwrite and look at projects much more like a lender would look at them. So, what we want to see, for example, is folks will hear there's grants available, and they're like, oh, great, I've got a business idea. It's like, well, we want to make sure you have skin in the game. We want to see this as a matching fund or as last dollars in or as a way to make market improvement. So, for example, with restaurants, you know, their margins are super, super tight, and with the cost of goods and everything going up right now, a really strong use of grant funds is replacing the equipment that constantly breaks, that you have to pay a repairman over and over again, things like that, things that can reduce the operating costs of a business is how we're looking at structuring these grants.
Yeah, and then, when it comes to the micro part of the micro enterprise, is it the same five employees or less?
Yeah, yeah, that part is the same, and the income qualification process is also.
But it could be used for a startup, which is good to spread the word out.
Yes, it could be, yes.
And then, you said 200,000 would be used directly for business loans or grants. Is that 50,000 tied to the loan you were working with our prior city manager on regarding economic development?
No, so we also have another CDBG activity in the queue. So, the city of Dunsmere last summer applied through the 2021 NOFA for a quarter million Economic Development Planning Activity to revitalize downtown. We've got our fourth CDBG representative in the past year assigned to us. He just reached out to Blake and I last week to start setting up meetings, and I checked in with him, and I was like, hey, where's this, where's this at in the process? And they say, oh, it's in review. So, it's still up at HCD, but we are waiting for that. And then, when it comes to it, I believe the plan was to have the city go out and bid for contractors on that one.
All right, thank you so much for that update.
Yeah, you bet.
I really appreciate all the work. Any additional questions? Thank you.
All right, Heather's going to talk about tourism now. Thank you.
Great, hello, everyone. I'm Heather Daz, I'm Program Director for Discover Siskiyou. I thought I would just give kind of a brief overview background of our program. We've been around since 2015 when Siskiyou County Lodging Properties first-ever Tourism Improvement District in Siskiyou County. We bring together jurisdictions as well as county territory with the goal of using sustainable funds to market the region as for outdoor recreation. We're run by a six-member management committee. Louie Dewey from K Springs is on our committee. Mark Lilly Committee, we meet quarterly to talk about our marketing activities, and our program is funded by a 2% assessment on room state. We use these funds to deploy a pretty robust marketing campaign. We do a lot of print ads, we've done billboards recently, we wrapped up a campaign in Sacramento in June that got over 3 million impressions, and we heard from the billboard company that it was one of their most successful campaigns to date, so that was pretty cool to hear. We also do, we have ads right now in the Medford and Reading airports. We have brochures and welcome centers from Washington down through Southern California. We do a lot of digital stuff as well. We have a Google Ads campaign that's running all the time. We've done video ads on streaming services like Hulu and Netflix. We're continuously pitching Siskiyou-related story ideas to journalists, kind of just try to hit everything we can. And in addition to marketing, we've developed a number of initiatives to benefit our stakeholders, which are lodging properties, and one of these is our event marketing program. So, this fiscal year, we've allocated $60,000 to supporting community events. We recently funded the Steampunk Festival here, and we've been working pretty closely with Cheryl at the Chamber to help kind of amplify the Chamber's marketing efforts, and we hope that the city will apply for future events as well. And then, we produce a video series called Siskiyou Snapshots. We've done a few featuring fishing here, and we have more on the horizon, so look for those coming up. We have a social media campaign. We do paid social, and we bring influencers here who have large followings. We actually have one coming into town tomorrow, and she's going to do fly fishing on the upper sack, so she's going to be and sharing that with her followers, which will be really fun to see. And then, kind of getting into some of the metrics, as I'm sure a lot of you know, the pandemic brought a lot of people actually into our county. A lot of our lodging property owners have reported that 2021 was actually their best year on record, and while we would have loved to keep that trajectory going, you know, we know it had to cap out at some point, and so, we see it coming down a little bit now. I think, you know, that can be attributed to a few things, gas prices definitely being one of them, right? Like, a lot of, everyone pretty much drives to us. And then, people just taking those bigger trips that they've put off, you know, because of the pandemic, now that air travel's opened up quite a bit more and all of that. But we're by no means in a bad spot. When we first entered the marketplace, generated around $350,000 of revenue, and when we wrapped up last fiscal year, we had brought in almost $900,000. So, we're growing, people are staying here, it's really encouraging to see, and we're really just focusing right now on a lot of that regional travel, because I think people aren't driving quite as far for the gas, you know, because of the gas crisis. So, we're doing a lot of marketing in Southern Oregon, Reading, trying to co-market with destinations there as well, try to get people who maybe have a trip planned in Reading to come up here for a day or two and tack it onto their trip, so. Strategy. Questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Heather, I'm excited about the fact that you've got a little bit of work going into promoting events, and I'm liaison with the Chamber, and one of the things that we've talked about here is taking a clear view and saying, how do we market ourselves in total and who does what, and how does that fit in? Is that something that we could work out, where we have a meeting where you guys in the Chamber sit down and come up with a vision of how we market and then figure out who has the different responsibilities?
Yes, yeah, I would love that. And so, we actually have a fund separate from our event fund that we're using to work with chambers or and/or cities. You know, obviously, we market Siskiyou as a whole, but we can be a lot stronger. Each individual community also has a really strong marketing effort, so we, yeah, we're definitely here to help if you wind up needing something like a new website or maybe like going through a brand identity process, a new logo, things like that. That's something that we can help with, as well as just helping with your overall marketing strategy.
Yeah, I think the key here is that we need to understand where is the most effective use to get people in.
Yeah.
And what is it that the Chamber does, and how do other chambers in the county react with you, and is there an interplay there also?
Yeah, it kind of varies from community to community. We are constantly trying to get chambers to meet with us. We, like, you know, like Quentin said, right, with Jedi and the SBDC, we don't want to duplicate efforts that chambers are making, we want to work with them, and, you know, we have a big following, so whenever we can share what you're doing with our audience, it just amplifies your efforts. The other thing I was going to mention, and this reminded me, was we have, we purchased some really cool business analytics software where we could actually drill into a specific business, a specific address, and, you know, whereas we can look, before we could look at the county as a whole, now we can see specifically this lodging property, this retail space, this restaurant, who's coming here, what are the demographics of the people coming there, where are they coming from, how much are they spending, and I think that's been really helpful for a lot of our chambers and stakeholders as well. So, we're happy to do that. Yeah.
If we stick with the Chamber, and we understand the years of COVID were particularly tough on local economies, causing our chamber to effectively shut down, now they're rebuilding. It's somewhat counterintuitive to me that as we try to rebuild our local economy, we're sending so many dollars to Waireka. So, I didn't know that you were part of Steampunk. What was the ask from the Chamber, and what did you do?
Yeah, so, they asked for the full award amount, which was $3,000, which we gave to them, and, you know, the district funds have to be spent on marketing, they can't be spent on like hard costs, like say even insurance or things like that. So, we talked to Cheryl about running some paid social ads, you can use it to hire talent, so like live music, that type of stuff. So, really, yeah, marketing that event and helping get the word out.
As we try to get back on our feet with our mostly summer events, Railroad Days, Brew Fest, perhaps Steampunk, the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce is asking the city for general fund dollars, significant general fund dollars to promote Dunsmere. So, I do sort of add on to the question, and I'm near my end of service, but when Louie Dewey got up and said, yes, this is a good thing, let's do that, I respected it and voted yes, but I think there ought to be some sort of assurance from the sum of the three units. I think small business program sounds very strong, I'm excited about that, but the promotional part, I don't know that the taxpayers are really getting the best bang for their buck as we
Yeah, well, I will note that it's not funded, this is separate from TOT, so this is funded by the tourists who are staying in the hotels, but I do see, yeah.
And with the short-term rentals, it's a very rapidly evolving one in Siskiyou. And I hope the communication in the future gets a lot better so that everybody's insured that we actually get a return, whether it's time or general fund or wherever the rhythm is come from.
Thank you, Councilor. Any additional questions? I have, I guess, one. You mentioned a great many avenues where you guys try out promotional activities for Siskiyou County, and I realize we're self-experiencing time transition away from print being the mainstay, and digital hasn't really fully replaced it yet. Do you have any metrics you could share with us on like exactly where the money's being spent and what the effects are? Because we'd love to see if you've tried all these at scale, what the results are, or could you at least speak to what hasn't?
Yeah, for sure, and I hesitate to say it hasn't worked, I would say harder to track, right? Like the print, you know, we've done a lot of brochures, we've had, you know, our lodging properties really wants rack cards, right? And I think they're great. Again, like print ads in like, we did one in Outside Magazine. You know, we've done a lot of newspaper ads, and they're great and they're beautiful, but that's been really hard to track for us. Like, we know how many they printed, but we don't know how many eyeballs are actually on it. So, to me, our Google Ads campaign is huge. We get, depending on how much we spend, around, I don't know, 200,000 to 400,000 impressions per month, and we track our conversions on that too, so we can see who clicks our ads and then who clicks on the book now button on our site, which we count as a conversion, because we don't actually make the sale on our site, but our conversion rate on that is around 30%, which is huge. Typical is like around six or seven, like that's considered really good. And I can share with you like how much we spend and like the cost per click and all of that.
What do you typically yearly spend on Google Ads?
Yearly spend around 40,000 to 50,000.
Okay, so an example would be if someone goes into the computer, types in Dunsmere, California, is that one of the words you guys pay?
Yeah, we do that.
So, it doesn't go to Dunsmere, it would go to Discover Siskiyou.
Or Dunsmere Hotels, lodging in, yeah, Northern California, yeah, we're paying to be that top spot.
That brings up, you know, following up on what we were talking about before, if we had a session and sat down and looked at how are we going to do events, how are we going to do the other different things, and then where is the most effective? You know, that way, if we're spending money from the Chamber, that's not being very useful in bringing people in, a different strategy. So, I think the way to look at it is starting off with, like the mayor said, what are the most effective ways, and then how do we work together as Chamber and Discover Siskiyou to get the most out of those effective?
Yeah, absolutely. Google Ads and social media is the other one, Facebook particularly for this community. A lot of people here are on Facebook, and you're able to really drill down into your target audience, and it's relatively inexpensive as well, it's a lot more inexpensive than Google Ads, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I have one final question. No. One final question. I know originally you had a five-year term, and you're successful in re-upping it. One final question. I know originally you had a five year term and you're successful in re-upping it. Is it five years, five years, five years?
No, we actually asked for a 10 year term and that was granted in 2019. So we're in year eight right now.
Cool.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
I would like to say that I am really glad and excited is SiskiyouFarmCo.com. It's the way everybody gets a piece of our own pie. I commend you on that.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
My doctor tried to prescribe and sour.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm now going to open up the podium for public comment, general public comment this evening. If you're with us on Zoom, please hit the raise your hand button and we'll get you for your public comment. You'll be allowed a three minutes time. I will give you a warning 30 seconds in. This is for any items not on the agenda concerning the city business or items that are on the consent agenda, which is the check registry for the last two weeks. And update authorized signers on leave, local agency investment fund, and recommend transfer decommissioned fire hydrants, surplus property and sell agenda or generally city business that's not otherwise on the agenda. Please come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Allison, 5334 River Avenue. This is my friend Laurel. And thank you for everything you guys do. I really appreciate it. And Wendy, thank you for all your service. I'm very appreciative for what you all do for the town. I know a few council meetings ago, I believe over three months ago, we talked about a commitment to a regular check in with the Wrenken Parks District. I'd like some follow up on that. For for some of the same things that I mentioned at previous meetings. The concern is about lack of communication from both the administration with the Wrenken Park and the board there. I'm looking for for more sustainability. I believe last time we spoke, we were all really excited about the softball tournament. I thought it was great. I, part of the grant money I raised for them was used for it, maybe about a third of it or so. I saw it as an investment opportunity for for the town with our beautiful asset of the baseball field and all the community work Dave and everyone else put into it. I continue to ask them now, what that we have that, what can we do for our children with the baseball field? What can we do to use it as an asset to to get a return on that investment? It's looking real good. So I'm not really getting too many answers. I'm also looking for sustainability with pool seasons. You know, so so we know we're going to have a nice long pool season like we did last year, every year. I've directed them to various grant opportunities. I've asked them to commit to them. No action, no response. It's actually embarrassing. I have to come up here to to say this instead of continue to go there, but it seems that this is the only avenue. My words have fallen on deaf ears. I've led the horse to water, so to speak, with grant opportunities for children, which is my biggest concern in the town here. And I really would like to use our wonderful assets, such as the pool and the baseball field to to help promote, you know, free free recreational opportunities for for folks in the town and to to give some kids like Laurel here, you know, some direction and things to do. So I ask you guys to please continue to pursue closer communication and relationship with Wrenken Park. I believe you had said quarterly meetings with them last time or something. I would have to check the notes. And I ask that you stop blindly throwing money at an organization that's lacking direction. Do you want to talk now, Laurel? Say, say I'm Laurel. You could do it. See all these other women that came up here and did it. My name's Laurel.
My name is Laurel. I like to play outside and I I heard you are remodeling the park. I would like some monkey bars, please.
Thank you, monkey bars.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
We did it.
If anyone else would like to make a public comment, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. I see none. I'll now close general public comment for this evening.
Mr. Mayor. Well, before we leave public comment, I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for clarifying the Brown Act advice that I heard a couple of meetings ago from those who went down to Long Beach. I think what you heard was trumped by the advice from the city attorney. I totally agree with the city attorney.
Do you know how we how we stepped in?
Because
It's not important.
With all due respect, it's not on the agenda. You can save it for council.
And and my suggestion is you might want to look at the language for for public comment and try to conform it to the advice from the city attorney. We don't sit here as stone statues. We can speak.
Would you like to continue your comments, Councilman R?
That's it.
Continue on, Councilman Casey.
Yes. And I really wanted to commend and make sure that everybody got into that. The SiskiyouFarmCo.com. It's a place where you can buy local goods. I think that is just amazing. I commend them. That was really cool. Steampunk update. It was excellent. We, after we put this event on the committee, we seem to think that maybe we're going to gear it down just for a one day event for next year. And just go like, you know, absolutely crazy for the one day. So that was something that I was wanting to bring back. There was one thing that really was inspiring during the steampunk event. We had a man that sat there with the kids and all day long for two days built stuff with these kids. You know, educated them with electricities. I watched them stick wires on a battery and make the fan come on and they were absolutely amazed. And that man is here, that's Dwight Bailey. And I personally publicly commending you and thanking you for what you put up with those children was absolutely amazing. You should get some kind of award, sir. Okay. And thank you for doing it. That was awesome. And the other thing that I would like to put out there is we've got a lot of road work going on right now. And I was kind of asked by a couple of the road guys, I could put out there to people, please be a little understanding. Our roads are getting fixed. They're doing the best they can. Please have a little patience. When you see the cone zones, slow down a little bit. These guys all have babies and children that they want to get home to too. So I'm asking, please have a little compassion and please slow down during the construction during or in the construction zones. It's about all I got now, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, sir.
I'm a little confused now. I thought we were going to hear from staff and then the council member.
Well, you started off, you kind of started us off in this.
Well, I was on item four. I wasn't on item five. So I had several items.
Okay, please share. I closed public comment and then Councilman R.
So is there public comment or not?
There was public comment. You did not come to the podium. Public comment is closed. Councilman R, please continue with your comments for this evening.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and the city manager because we actually held a pre-agenda review for this meeting. We met in person for over an hour per the protocols, and I thought it was highly valuable to get to be able to speak to the mayor and the city manager in the context of the next agenda. So thank you for reinstituting that practice.
No problem.
We had a harvest party at the community garden across the street last Saturday. It was a lovely day, a lovely event. And what I learned is childcare is a big issue in our community. And throughout the summer, the Community Resource Center has provided childcare for up to 17 kids from newborn to two year old in the safe space of the garden. They have their own little kitchen where they can make mud pies. They learn about putting a seed in the ground and seeing what happens. Including the pumpkins that we grew across the street that they got to carve up last Saturday. So I, you know, the city of Dunsmere supports the Dunsmere Community Resource Center, and I'm so proud that we all do. Thank you. The third item is as we come toward November 11th Veterans Day, I would hope that we could have a parade with the honor guard that was at the Railroad Days Parade. I would hope we could have a brief parade. I promise probably five veterans in our community that we will do something, having done nothing last year. But if we could do a parade to the cemetery and I would hope the mayor would come. I hope the vice mayor would come. I would hope and we could start a tradition. I'm happy to help, but I'm not going to do it all by myself. And that's it.
Councilman Lecasey.
Thank you. Just really quick, Blake or Dustin, do we have an update on the children's park equipment purchase? I know Blake, I think prior to your arrival was having issues connecting with Game Time on ordering that equipment and scheduling the installation. So I'm just hoping that we can get on that because I know that grant spending deadline is coming up. And if you need help making connections with them, I can sort through my emails to get the contact that we were working with and the quotes that we've previously got from them.
I'll follow up on.
Thank you. I'll go through and make a note to send emails that I've had previously sent to me about that. So we should probably get that done. I would like to also revisit the parks and recreation. It was made aware to me by other residents, not just Allison, that they were looking forward to having more meetings regarding park improvements. There's a lot of interest in what's going on at the rail yard. And then the question I get now is who's going to maintain that? You know, is that going to be part of our parks and trail system? And so I think there's a bigger conversation that needs to continue to happen for that. So I'd like to request that piece moving forward. I'd also like to request a meeting to set priorities with Siskiyou County Economic Development Council. I'm sorry that they didn't stay for updates, but I didn't feel it was appropriate to request that in the presentation item. But I think they've done a really wonderful job in supporting us over COVID, but a lot of it was just reactive response to COVID and supporting businesses. But I think with the amount of money that we give them per year, it would be nice to get on the same page and understand the priorities that we would like our money used for and projects that we would like supported, for example, local foods. Some of the other pieces that we've talked about with our composting and green waste program. So it'd be really nice to get on the same page with them to kind of work a little bit more collaboratively on what projects we pick and work on in the future. Finally, the California Office of Emergency Services launched a Prepare California Jump Start Grant Program, which is a competitive grant process, but it closes tomorrow. It only had an opening window of three weeks. But it, what it would do is if granted, we would get a million dollars over five years to hire an individual to focus specifically on hazard mitigation and disaster resiliency. It would go towards supplies, pay and benefits with the over a five year period with the hope that they could assist us with any level of disaster and hazard preparedness, which includes climate adaptation, green waste programming, flood reduction, stormwater, different pieces like that. So I'm trying to finish that application and get that from the council to move forward. There's no match for the grant, so it would not be any cost to the staff. And so I've been putting that together on my free time so that we don't waste any time or money on it since we have no appropriations for applying for that grant. But hopefully we can be super competitive. Our wildfire percentile is that we're in the 96. So we have a really good chance of being a good applicant. And the only other agency in Siskiyou County that I know is applied is Wyrica. So I'm hoping that we can be really competitive on that and get that in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lecasey.
Oh, I apologize. I completely forgot where I was for like the last week. So I attended the American Planning Association State Conference and actually had a really good conversation. There was a diversity summit on the first day that talked about California's history of sundown towns, which is the deliberate practice of municipalities throughout California's kind of establishment, using municipal code and zoning codes to prohibit people of color in towns after sundown and talked to Chinese American scholar from Scripps College down in Anaheim and talking to him about Dunsmere. And actually Dunsmere does have a history of Chinese Americans and Chinese immigrants coming over to work on the railroad and the individual runs a podcast that actually looks at different cities throughout the state of California and looks at the history that's around those pieces. And Dunsmere is actually on their docket to talk about on their podcast. So I'm hoping, you know, there's a really cool opportunity to explore some of the multiculturalism around our railroad history, even if it is a little bit macabre sometimes. But I think it's a really important piece of history that shouldn't be forgotten just because we want to celebrate the good things about the railroad. There were also pretty terrible things about the railroad. We we talk about, I mean, our own Cantera spill in 1991, which is actually one of the worst chemical spills in US history. So at least on a railroad line. So you know, it's it's another aspect that, you know, we could really start to lean into and and take ownership of moving forward. So hopefully I can come back with some programming around that.
Thank you, Councilman Lecasey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to give an update on an event I attended. Most of you are aware that the League of California Cities has 16 divisions. We're part of what's called the Sacramento Division. And I'm a representative, one of the two representatives for the area here. And so they had a game where they have regular membership meetings to get together with people who support the League of California Cities corporations and such. And so they had a game down for the River Cats in Sacramento. I went down there, drove down there in the afternoon, got back at one o'clock in the morning. That was fun. But the reason I'm bringing this up is because I was able to talk with one of the program managers with the company. The company is called Vanir, V A N I R. And it's a company that does major projects installations for cities. And I was talking with this one fellow, Kirk Whitem, Whiteman. And it turns out he's another Notre Dame guy. So we were talking and I I explained that we have this airport and we're looking at doing an industrial park or some sort of development. And so he reached out to me and put me in touch with, or he's going to be putting me in touch with a company called K2 Development out of Reading, which does this type of work. Right now they're very involved with a bunch of projects. But I sent him along a copy of the video that was done back in 19 where we talked about the industrial park. And he's going to have him check into it and look and see if there's some way that we can start kickstarting something there. So I'm hoping that drive down there and back again, and they didn't play very well. They lost like eight to nothing. But in any case, I hope that might bear some fruit down the line. And let's see. The rest of it would be for Deepak. So I'll just wait for committee reports. I will say though, that with regards to the public comment, the reason that came from the city manager and the city attorney was because I reached out personally to the city attorney. And so after that, what he replied was sent to everybody. So as I read what he wrote, it doesn't mean that we could just chit chat back and forth afterwards or during. But it says that if you're asking a particular question with a particular answer in mind, it doesn't have to do with any business of the council, then you can respond. But it said that even then, the chair should be the one making the determination. So I would just say that it's not as clear and it's just a matter, I think, of being sensitive to the idea that we're not supposed to discuss items that are on the agenda and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Deutsch. On that note, I just want to remind everyone, we intended to do a training with our city attorney with both the city council and planning commission. Tentatively, we're looking at dates in early November, early to mid November for that. To just be aware that that is coming up. As regards to Brown Act training, we figured it's good to revisit. We were able to participate, those that were at the conference with ethics training, but the requirements for everybody involved here. So good to make a practice of it, particularly with the city manager. Good to make a practice of it, particularly with the city manager, uh, less familiar with California law, so it could be geared towards Dunsmere specifically.
And he wasn't able to attend the Brown Act down at the conference anyway, so that would be good.
Well, and the planning commission is also a Brown Act committee, uh, one that doesn't interact necessarily as often or as formally. But it's good for them to be aware of all that. Yeah, I mean, it's just healthy. Um, particularly John's excited about um, tailoring a two hour training. For the city. So there's nothing that, that doesn't really relate to how we operate. So very excited for that. Um, as regards to public comment this evening, I do apologize, it was already closed. Uh, but happy to field any questions after the meeting personally, um, or you can send any inquiries to our city manager or myself. Uh, my email is on the website. All right, uh, I know we have uh, several guests.
This is Mayor, yes. You might want to check with your city manager and your police chief over the force staff.
Just say we have people uh, waiting from different time zones, so I'm gonna end my comments here and turn it over to our city manager.
All right. So uh, in the last, uh, it's been a crazy busy last couple of weeks, uh, primarily as, as uh. Councilmember Kaiser mentioned, um, a lot of roadwork going on. We're trying to get streets closed up before winter. And so um, we have, just in the mix of everything, it's been kind of chaotic, but we appreciate all the patience of, of everybody. And, and yes, please slow down. But the, the work is, uh, the work is uh, keeps on moving. Um, the tank project is uh, we are, I just signed paperwork today to allow for a, a, a winter closure. A winter hold and then extend the project through the winter. Um, just uh, the. Just timing of everything, they weren't able to quite get it closed up and, and everything we needed and, and we opted to not do um. Some of the pipe work underneath of uh, coming up to the tank due to uh, timing of being able to get asphalt and covering it back up before winter. So we wanted to make sure we had the, all of that stuff uh, um, taken care of. Spent primary, most of my time is spent around uh, Public Works in the last couple of weeks. Uh, Public Works building, just kind of trying to vet some properties so I can bring them back to the committee. And then also with streets and water. And uh, so you know, we have a, there's a big hole down here on the end. And uh, want to apologize publicly for the extended uh, water outage uh, specifically for the high school. I know we're probably their hero this week because they didn't have school on Monday, but that was, that was completely unplanned. We had a few challenges getting the water shut off so we could actually get the valve changed out. So um, it took about four hours to get all the water shut down to where we could uh, take the pipe out and uh, re-put, put the valve in. So. Um, which was not, not planned. And so it took uh, until about noon rather than about eight AM like we originally planned. So. Um, but uh, everything's good there and they're moving forward. And so uh. I also, uh, last night I attended the uh, the Chamber uh, Pine Street uh, Business Social, I guess you could call it. And uh, I mean, a lot of the community members and uh, and business, business owners, and it was just a nice little event and uh, the, the food was good.
I was, I was gonna ask you, how was the food?
The food was great.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Uh, two questions. One is. Before you took your seat, the council unanimously passed a resolution to landmark the California Theater. And we voted on it with the proviso. It needed to have review from the city attorney. And it needed to be recorded against the property. And I just wonder if that's happened yet.
I, not completely. We're checking on it. And that was, I had a conversation with him earlier today, and that's probably why he wanted to do public comment, but. I. I, I thought I handled it uh, prior to council meeting, but he must have had more to say. So.
The, the second item is. I live on Sacramento Avenue. I have a number of businesses on Sacramento Avenue. And now there's a series of small orange cones in front of one of Mr. Juarez's properties, the Castle Rock Hotel. The sidewalk is tremendously heaved and cracked.
He's been notified already and uh, that's supposed to be corrected.
Cones or his cones or what?
I don't know for sure. They might be his. Um, but he was notified of the, of the broken up uh, sidewalk. And so that is taken care of. Oh, one other thing I wanted to note is so um, we have uh, I've been working with Union Pacific and, and kind of uh. Navigating some of that truck traffic and stuff here down on Sacramento. And we're gonna look at sending out some notifications shortly, but we will have some parking limitations in certain areas where it's very narrow. And uh, there, there will be signage and we will tow. Um, just so that's out there. And so we will, we'll notify those property owners, but where it gets kind of narrowed down here at the bottom of Cedar. And then right coming down the hill to Pine, uh, those areas will be limited on parking once they start uh, ramping up their uh, truck operations.
That's the only handle on the truck.
Well, could please share with uh, council, you told me regarding um, Union Pacific uh, agreed to cover the costs.
Yep. So, right. So we did do a, we did do a kind of a video, high, high resolution video road survey. Um, that uh, was completed uh, last Thursday, maybe Friday. Um, I haven't got an update on it yet, but uh, Union Pacific did agree to pay for that. And then we will go back and do that same thing after the completion of their, of their primary hauling. And so we're, we're looking at approximately fifty trucks a day for the duration of the project uh, inbound. Uh, loaded. So that means whether they're coming down Sacramento to the upper yard or from the up north yard to the south yard. About somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to fifty plus trucks.
Any additional questions?
They should have the paper, the road.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So again, going back to the discussion we just had about Brown Act, I mean, that also pertains to comments, so we're not supposed to discuss items that are not duly noted on the agenda. So if we could limit that, please.
Police Chief Ortiz.
I think you may, uh. The steam pump you did was awesome. Ton of fun, no problems. The town's in good shape. Uh. Glad to be made aware of the issues uh, the public works has been having with traffic. In regards to road construction areas, I'll pass it on with that. Have a better presence at that. We've, I finally, I think I got the county to rewire our substation for us. I'm a modern. You're, I'm not a tech person. Words, cables, wires, things. So uh, the hope is that nobody will snare themselves while walking. Catch themselves with the cords, cables, wires and things. Simple more professional government style.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Move into the committee reports.
Deepak. Um, three things coming out of Deepak right now. First of all, um. I know that they've communicated with the city manager, he's set to do this, but they're asking for a mailing, as we talked about before. To go out to the entire N nine six oh two five. And uh, the mailing would include two items. One would be a map of Zone Haven to remind, let people know about their zones. And then either a separate piece of paper or a second on the back would be um, information about flooding. Because with everything happening with flooding around nowadays, uh, we probably need to bring that to mind. They had done some work on that. Early in the beginning of Deepak, and now they're bringing it back up and they want to get the word out. So uh, that'll be working. On the alarm system, um, uh, Jason Young has helped me, got together. We, we identified the companies that make them so we can move forward with the grant process and I'll be processing that. Going ahead. So the idea is we had to identify the various companies that make alarms. So that we could then go ahead and, and put out what the, the ultimate cost would be comparing the different items. So I'll be working that. One other thing that came up, and I've reached out to Blake about this, and eventually I'll probably reach out to Bryce Craig. Um, and I'll, I'll mention it later on, talking about the conference, but um, I, I think what, what Core did here with their pilot program and the number of, I think it's forty-five different properties, something like that, that they've already done and done the, the hardening on. Um, I came up with the idea of seeing if Pusher would like to do some kind of a video on, on this. Because again, it's supposed to be a pilot program and we could uh, on one hand, um, help them promote what they're doing as Core in terms of their mission. And on the other hand, I think we could also include it as a possible uh, Pupm award um, for um. What we're doing here in the city. So I, I'm going to be looking forward to see if we could come up with a video. That talks about the project, what they did and, and kind of puts us on the spotlight for having participated in that. So that's what's going on with Deepak right now.
Thank you.
Well, I, uh, no, no questions. But for solid waste. I think for our next meeting and Juliana's Chair of the Solid Waste Committee, we need to have the city manager attend with the notion. Up until SB thirteen eighty-three. Clement's Waste Disposal provided all disposal services and all that were was a billing agent. For them, including setting rates. Now we have a statewide mandate. That's leading us toward green waste, food disposal, bottles and cans. And it's going to involve the Public Works Department. It's going to involve our agreement to be part of the Siskiyou County. Collaborative that reports to the state. We have a three-year window. Uh, so we need to be in compliance. We took our rural waiver. We need to be in compliance, I think by January.
Other people, is this a committee reporter? Is this something you just want to make sure is on the agenda for the next?
Well, we've almost lost the window for doing significant green waste reduction. We appropriated five thousand dollars for green waste reduction. And I don't know if we're going to try to do it this year. It's going to roll over to next year.
So we'll just make sure that that's on the agenda for that committee. And I believe, and Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're scheduled to meet next Monday.
Yes, we are, but that is Indigenous Peoples' Day, FYI.
Are, are you guys off that day?
Yes.
Oh. Um, then let's get together and make sure that we reschedule that since we have um, not had that meeting for a while.
Okay.
Um, if it's possible to do that later in the week. Please, and thank you.
Yeah.
I thought that the, that was, next thing it was a finance committee.
No, uh, Finance Committee was supposed to meet this Monday, but uh, Blake sent out an email that he wanted more time to work on the budget and that we canceled this past Monday's meeting.
Yeah, I know that. I thought it was gonna be.
No, it'll be the Monday after.
Is Finance Committee um, thoroughly delved into the audit?
We have uh, discussed the audit and gone over the audit, but Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have issued a recommendation or anything on the audit.
Uh, so prior year's audit, uh, so six thirty twenty-one. Uh, that one's been, you know, accepted, but we were going through it.
Yes.
We may have some recommendations further going forward with that, but uh, I just an update, I am working on the six thirty twenty-two audit.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we did, we did discuss the twenty-one. We did not come up with recommendations or conclude it. Um, and then we were waiting for the most recent.
Okay, thank you. Any additional committee reports? Informally, I, I definitely been doing a lot of work uh, researching. Public Works, building locations as well, uh, trying to get together a point where the committee can meet and come back with recommendations sooner. Rather than later. It's going to be a longer process than uh, the committee coming back to council once. Um, we've got a couple of options. We'll have a committee meeting soon.
Okay.
Uh, then let's move into the approval of the minutes for September fifteenth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Against. Carries unanimously. Right, uh, let me move into the consent agenda for this evening. We have a check registered from September tenth through September thirtieth. Update authorized centers on life, local agency investment fund account. Uh, recommend transfer of decommissioned biohydrants to surplus property and self for scrap metal.
Mr. Mayor, before I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any way we can discuss item C?
I'd be happy to move into new business item A, if you'd like it.
Yeah.
Or new bus.
It would be new business item C.
Okay, well, the new business, I don't see.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Yeah, on that note, then I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries unanimously. We have no public hearing uh, this evening and we have no old business. This brings us uh, to our new business for this evening. Item A, downtown wifi project. Council calls, um, at a time when city staff do not have a great deal of bandwidth for further research. Um, we blessed myself and Councilman Deutsch, uh, who's the one that really began uh, this exciting research project. Uh, to look into how we can here and now uh, help bridge the digital divide and bring more access. Um, be better situated to participate in the world of high-speed internet. So um, looking into specifically how we bring uh, wifi hotspots to our downtown. Um, there's actually a lot involved with this project, but we're excited to have the only company that responded to us positively. Um, as far as building this, we've been working for three months now. Um, first on the engineering, it would be practical. Uh, kind of keep it an eye out for costs too. Things have changed and shifted. Uh, but for tonight, you know, there's a lot to take in here, so it's going to be more, get you guys up to speed on what it would look like. Um, I will say the cost, we have not firmly um, determined yet. We started off looking somewhere closer to twenty-six hundred a month. Um, it looks like we're going to be able to get them below two thousand, so keep that in your mind, but I'm really excited to share with the, this evening. Um, and Bruce, do you have to add, so the introduction goes?
Uh, well, I just want to identify that we have Vince Rennick here from the company. And we have all the people online that'll be go over and going over the discussion. And so I, I'll leave it to the mayor to kick it off.
So Vince, if you'd like to come up here, I have not personally had the pleasure, but I know you've interacted with the town uh, many times before.
Yeah, if I could, uh, just to point that out, uh, the reason I know Vince is that about four years ago, he was working, he was the head of uh, uh, Northland. And when the three cities got together and hired a consultant, he was intimately involved in that. So now we're a little further down the line and that's all.
Okay, all right. Well, welcome. Thank you. We are, thank you for your time. Um, we are a little bit further than the Rosers. Uh, I am currently the Director of Advanced Commercial Services for Live Broadband Northwest Region. And I think we have. Out there in the ether, some of my fellow teammates are going to do a presentation to you tonight about the proposed downtown wifi. So without stealing any of their thunder, I'll be around, I can stick around after the meeting, or I live up in Mount Shasta, so. I'm available for further questions. Okay, so with the. Thank you so much, Vince.
Well, I'll take, take it from there. Just to introduce myself, uh, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. So my name's Gary Sweet. I'm the commercial engineer involved in the design on this project. Uh, some of my partners on here, I have Nick Kamara. He was my co-designer on this. We've got Tammy Lang here. She's the Commercial Sales Director with us. And I have Craig Seibel. He's our Vibe Technology Solutions Director. And so quite a few people, if you need to ask any questions, I can divert some of those questions to some, and I'll take some of those. But. If you, you guys have a screen where I can share my uh. Share my screen.
We, we do, if we can give it access.
Wendy, you might need to not make me co-host and make Gary co-host.
And I got three screens going here, so just let me know what you see on there. Technology, right?
Yeah.
All right, share. Now I'm going to start off with the basics on the maps. So to get started, basically, you know, the big tricky part to designing a wifi system for a citywide area is, is truly the real estate, the, the mere square footage involved in it. Uh, so the way you distribute that signal, that's the important part. Now, some people will take a wireless access point. And do a point-to-point through the air, and you'll lose a lot of throughput by doing that. And so that's not the ideal way. So how do you get a direct wired connection from one access point to another access point over long distances? And that's where Vibe has actually come into the place here, where we're uniquely positioned, where, we're already a communications company that's been doing business in, in. Uh, down Dunsmere, whether it be residential or commercial for decades, whether, first it was Northland and now Vibe. And so we're positioned on those telephone poles already with fiber in place. Now, in this particular project, we're going to utilize that fiber. But it allows us to, and, and run some new fiber, but it allows us to get access points to. But it allows us to, and, and run some new fiber, but it allows us to get access points to strategic locations. We worked hand-in-hand with, uh, the manufacturer for access points, uh, what Ruckus. Will be using some of their T-series access points, which are very high-powered access points. And running fiber optics out to each of those. So we'll be having fiber that already comes in right up here at the top, uh, um, top up to the corner of Shasta. And we're going to be running down both sides of the street with fiber. And we're going to run some new fiber to get the access points out here. Access points strategically placed on these buildings over here. With the main brain of it inside the council chambers. Now, we currently have fiber in the council chambers. In this project, we'll be bringing fiber over to City Hall as well. Uh, fiber will be coming over to the library. Was the library?
Community Resource Center.
Community Resource Center. And then also, just to drag over here. We've added in the Dunsmere Parks and Recreations in here. Now, all of these access points are going to be operating on a mesh network, and what that means is each access point. Will work in unison with each, each other access point. So you won't have multiple different. You, you know, wireless names, they're all going to be working in a mesh together. So when you go from one access point to the other access point, your, your device isn't even going to see why, right? And so I just wanted to go through kind of some of the basics of that setup there, so that we can kind of understand the logistics of this. Now, one of the things that does benefit the city. Is in bringing fiber out here, the, the difficult part, when we're looking at getting fiber to a business, aside from the wireless, uh, wireless setup. A direct fiber connection to a business is the best kind of internet you can have. And the difficulty where it comes with price is usually getting the construction process of getting the fiber to the building. And in this process, we're going to be putting splice cases in. Along the business district, and that makes it so that we can actually get fiber to those businesses on individual connection. Much, much easier without as much construction, so it benefits each of the businesses involved in getting a direct fiber connection set up. However, for the district, it, it puts out a, a full wireless, wireless network that all the citizens in the downtown corridor are able to use. And I think what started it, when I first started talking, was the lack of, uh, cell phone signal as you're going through and. And I've witnessed that when I'm, you know, going down the street is, is the cell phone signal not being very good. Uh, so while you're going down the street and you want to connect to your devices, order some food. Whatever it is technologically wise that you want to connect to, not having that signal. Is, is kind of a hindrance, and this would solve that particular issue.
Mr. Mayor, point.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Was there a question?
No, uh, we're, we're reserving questions till later.
Okay. So now that we kind of understand that sheer map, I got a PowerPoint presentation to just briefly go over here. So we've worked in close partnership with the city of Dunsmere to develop an intense wireless access system for the downtown corridor. The purpose is to delight, deliver a reliable wireless internet to anyone visiting the downtown area.
Just so you know, Gary, we're still just staring at the Google Earth map.
Oh.
He has a presentation that he switched over to. It's a new thing on Zoom that when you switch your windows, it doesn't automatically switch anymore. You have to deliberately. Like hit the share button, which is weird that they changed that.
We're, we usually use Teams.
Yeah, no, it's, it, it's happening to everybody.
And now it's not coming up at all.
No, we're, we're still looking at the KMC here.
Okay, I got this.
There you go. This happened to me like two weeks ago on a Zoom call and they're, they're like, yeah, we didn't see any of your presentation the entire time. So I was like, alright, cool.
Well, I will say thank you for saying that, because I was going to go on with the presentation as if you could see it.
Yeah, it's okay.
Alright. However, I'm not seeing my presentation come up as a screen to share.
While he's doing that, the one thing I was going to point out is that, uh, uh, if you're not aware of it, it should be obvious, they're going to be putting the cost. And putting in all the development. We're not paying anything for that. We in turn have a, a, a contract length and the, the cost that depends on the contract length. But, um, again, all of the actual installation will be done by the company, and so that means we don't have to put that money out.
Okay, it's up now, Gary.
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, so basically just wanted to run through it. Um, as I said, building out this network brings the fiber closer to every single business over there on the downtown corridor. Makes, makes you be able to get to, get to those businesses a lot easier. The way we deliver this is through. The Ruckus access point is the T-series, very, very sleek. Can you guys all see this?
Yeah.
It's weatherized, weatherproof, can be rained on, be snowed on, can operate in the heat, in the intense heat. Uh, it's enclosed with an incredibly powerful antenna. Uh, working with Ruckus, we actually did a heat map on the city to find out the most, uh, uh, the most coverage it's going to get, the, the best coverage it's going to get over here. And that covers the entire downtown corridor over here with a missing piece right in here that there was nothing there to cover. Now it's going to bleed over into this spot, but your best coverage is, is right in between these. Now it's also going to bleed over into the residential area, but with, uh, you know, lower signal, not as, not as intense as right in here. Um, you're going to get your best coverages in there and all the devices are going to be able to connect. Ruckus is able to connect thousands of users. There's microprocessors in each of these access points that are able to handle that traffic. And I've got Craig Seibel on here that can kind of speak to that. Uh, but I kind of wanted to give you the, the sleek look. The, the idea is to go ahead and put these access points up on the building, connected, uh, through a Cat-five cable that goes through the business. Down in and plugged into a fiber switch. And that power ethernet switch is going to power up that antenna. So where we put it, we won't require power, but inside the business we will. And then that encompasses, like I said, the, uh. The downtown corridor and the Parks and Recreations whole area. Now, some of the, the benefits to this, I just kind of wanted to highlight a few. One is, is in helping create economic development in the Dunsmere community. Uh, allowing citizens to access, access to services at no charge that gives them the ability to use technology that they might not have otherwise been able to use. Partnering with the city allows the community to access, access to the robust of fiber optic network without the worry of maintenance and upfront costs. And like you'd mentioned, no upfront costs. We're covering the, the bill on the construction, all the parts, the setup and the maintenance. And partnering with Vibe will ensure that the Wi-Fi network is current and up to date as technology change that involves. So a part breaks, we come out and we fix it. Technology evolves as it always does. We come out and evolve with it. Um, and this is at no cost to the city. So Vibe has been a, a vital part of providing communication services to the residential and business community in Dunsmere for decades. This is just one more way that we can serve. And so with that, I wanted to kind of open it up to questions and I'll kind of divert that off to the team as, as some of those questions will be directed.
I have many.
Okay.
Throw them on.
Okay. I think the first and foremost, you know, how, you know, as we put the system together, what is Vibe's role in cybersecurity management of the network? And what steps are we going to take? And this is to the group as well, but what steps are we going to take to ensure cybersecurity while people are using the wa, uh, open wireless? Because it is a huge cybersecurity threat. Um, it's something talked about a lot in municipal governments that offer this in downtowns that ones who did not think of that. Have had their networks basically hijacked by people utilizing it to hack people on the system. Um, so how are we kind of covering that?
Good question.
Not one I want to divert to Craig, if you're available there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having us this evening. And, uh, security is definitely, uh, an important part of a public access solution. So first and foremost, uh, whether, you know, when, when we're, we're deploying these solutions. A, a piece of that that's really important is, uh, protecting each individual client as they're connecting. To get that, uh, internet access so they can do what they need to do. So the, uh, the technology that's involved in this solution, it's, it's called client isolation. And really what the idea is that every client that connects is isolated on their own separate logical network. And what that does, that provides them a logical separation from, from the other. Users that are on the network, whether it's one user, ten users, hundred users, a thousand users, right? Each one of them is designed to have their own separate access, their funneled connection to the internet, where they can connect to the internet. Get what they need to get, pull that internet, pull that access down and move forward. Um, without being able to communicate cross to other devices that are still connecting to that same wireless network. So client is, client isolation is huge and it's a part of the wireless network. Uh, the other pieces that we also leverage for security are, um, you know, based on the considerations. And the communications we have, you know, with the city and municipalities saying, hey, what are your needs? What are your desires for filtering content? You know, what are your parameters? Do we want to filter XYZ? You guys provide what it is that's going to, so there are certain things that are going to be available on the wireless network. There are certain things that are going to be considered taboo. We don't want to have access to those. We can identify those and create those filters based on that content. We can filter based on applications. Say, there are certain applications that consume a lot of bandwidth, or they're just not considered, um, necessary or, or desirable. You know, by, by the, the city, and we can, we can filter those out as well by application, whether it's. Certain social media, all social media or whatever, with that being just one example. So, so we have quite a bit of granularity when it comes to security. To, from the point of isolating each individual client to individual, to filtering applications. And filtering content to make sure that all our users that are accessing this public system are accessing it safely and securely. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, no, that, that, that was very helpful. And in terms of, um. Limiting content, is there an ability as opposed to like just not allowing people onto certain applications or certain areas? Um, do we throttle them instead? So for example, we can allow people to get onto their Netflix account if they're. You know, sitting out on a park bench, but it's at a much slower rate because we know that those streaming sites consume a lot more than.
Absolutely right. You know, if I'm just browsing the web and, you know, and, and, and my kid next to me is, is streaming Netflix. Well, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna be pulling a lot more than I am. So, uh, you know, throttling can, can be done in a lot of different fashions. Whether it's, whether we're throttling per client access, per, per client connection, or we're throttling by application type. You know, it, it all, it, it's, it's all just a flavor and a type. We can design it either way. To, so we have all those granular controls. There are so many knobs on, on this dashboard, so to speak. But yeah, it can be done either way, uh, at whatever, whatever, uh, um, request you all have.
Well, um, on that note, because a lot of these questions came up in our early meetings, um, could you guys, uh, explain to the rest of council? What the general capacity of this would be unthrottled?
One, one thousand megs. It'd be one, one gig circuit, symmetrical, so up and down.
Okay.
Um, so we'd be able to have thousands of discrete users.
Yeah.
And now also to say that, uh, there's going to be segregated, what we call VLANs, uh, virtual local area net, network access. So there's going to be a wireless VLAN that's specifically for the open network for the customers. And that'll have client API isolation as, as Craig was talking about. We're going to put in a separate wireless VLAN that's a secured network, and that would be specifically for the city. Uh, now that can be used if we're going to put up any, if you, you were going to put up any cameras, you could utilize that network for that camera. For the, for the, the purpose of those cameras, or to get from one facility to another facility. Um, to network City Hall, to say the council chambers, that sort of thing. And so they're going to be segregated into different networks with the client's network being, um. An API isolation, meaning that no, no other device can see each other. If that, that makes sense, yeah.
Could you also cover the concept of the landing page and how that would be useful to us?
Yes, and so what that means is, and, and we just basically get a website from you. Um, whatever webs, web URL you want to give us. And when a customer comes on, they'll, you know, ask to connect to the network. It's going to give them, you know, the terms and conditions they accept. It's going to land them on whatever page you want them to see, whatever webpage URL you want them to see. Um, and they'll have to go to that page before they continue surfing the web. And with that page, you can put in your, your list of community events, upcoming events, concerts, uh. City, city council meetings, different events, whatever you want to put on that page. All we would need is the URL, URL to put in there, the webpage. And it would land every customer that comes onto that network to that site, redirect them to.
Thank you.
This is kind of more for the committee, but you know, with certain wireless networks that are managed by municipalities or public entities. There's sometimes a tiered service plan, so if people did want to use a larger capacity, they could opt into paying a fee for that. Was that explored by the committee at all, or is that something that's potentially possible with this?
Um, we did not explore that one specifically. We did explore the idea of selling advertisement on the splash page. Or just using it for city advertisement, et cetera.
Well, it's just kind of a thought, you know, if you do want to make this self-sufficient, offering something where if we did throttle, say, streaming sites and someone is. You know, in their Sprinter van and, and parked on a city street overnight, which is, you know, again, people do that. You could charge them a certain premium to allow them to stream that if they're willing to pay that.
I think that'd be a great avenue to look into. A big concern of the committee. Been working with this was like, on the one hand, just trying to provide as much free access as possible, more thinking of our, you know, citizens. Um, because it's kind of two sides to this. One is just. You know, it's, it's this modern era. There's a lot of people that come to Dunsmere. And for them not being able to use their cell phone or gain access immediately, uh, it kind of tames the town for them. It's hard being backwards, older, not somewhere where they can see themselves coming back, thriving. Uh, but then there's people that are here and we view this project as kind of a continuation of, say, that the internet access provided at the library or the resource center. Um, so it's not that those won't be there. In fact, that's a whole nother a, aspect of what we've been working on. But it'll expand that and maybe free up, say, the resource computers for only people that need help. Help applying, if they know how to and have a device, they could be virtually anywhere in the downtown and have that. So, um, I love the idea though. I think we could look into that. I just would be careful to not limit access for low-income households that maybe need to rely on this.
Okay, yeah. And then finally, has the committee considered, um, what we're going to do to comply with the historic district architectural standards? Um, with these devices. I know that's a big discussion with a lot of historic districts and are we going to do covers for them? Are we going to, you know, plan them into the facade so that they're not visible?
Uh, we, we discussed that, um, planning commission would have to review it, but thankfully, we have the option of putting them on top of buildings or on sites. Uh, there might be some advantage depending on the building and which one, um, but it, it came up as just something that planning commission would have to review.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
One of the benefits to that, just to say too, is that they're not super large devices. They're not like a mini cellphone tower or anything like that. They're pretty sleek in design and pretty sleek in, in size, so easily hidden.
And while we're, um.
Julia, looking out for the historical society.
This is a great point. I, I'd like to add a couple more, just to part of the presentation. So splash page was a huge part. Security cameras, you know, we could potentially get some very high-tech ones. But this network would allow us to put up very affordable, very simple cameras anywhere within this. Not that we'd want to go obsessive towards that, but I, I do know in talking with, uh, I guess the three police chiefs I've dealt with here. That increasingly in California, or at least Siskiyou County's DA, it's so hard to get anything prosecuted unless it is on camera. In the modern world. So a perfect example would be Railroad Days incident that happened late night. Okay, literally one camera pointed down Main Street would have probably simplified that entire case and then eventually maybe even be the term. And then it'd bring fiber to the downtown. So right now, anyone that say wanted fiber in their building. Well, they had to pay to bring it all the way there. This project brings it a lot closer, so it provides a, you know, tertiary benefit for anyone wanting to come on the system. As part of.
I like the fact that they're alleviating the cost to the consumer of it.
Well, the, the nice thing with the security cameras, uh, potentially it could open this up to be somewhat, um, or we could, we could apply. Public safety funding towards this, you know, proportionate amount, um, to help with that. But we were very concerned with the costs, not that we have a definite quote, because, uh, Vibe has definitely been a good partner in trying to reach the point where. You know, I, I've told them many, many times, I don't want you to go lose money on this, but I don't want you to make any either. You know, we'll be good partners. Um, you guys won't lose money. They already are the foremost internet company in our town. Um, they have, I just got the numbers today, uh, nine hundred, sorry, six hundred and ninety residential users and thirty-eight businesses. So they are the ones with the network right here, right now already. Part of the reason this seems to work as a partnership, but, um. I was concerned about our own city facilities not having adequate internet. And we've gotten by slowly, but it's, you know, the, the world's moving forward very fast. So we've actually included this, um, one, one gigabyte, um, fiber to council chambers building. Included for free or, you know, with the package, City Hall, Library and Community Resource Center. It's also have that, and we're continuing to discuss the options of the, uh, public or the water treatment plant. The sewage plant there doesn't have fiber there and the cost of bringing it down would be.
And they probably don't need it either as much.
Well, no, but we're talking about getting them the same download speed. Well, no, but we're talking about getting them the same download speed.
Well, it is important for facilities, especially for wastewater, to have the fiber optic or consistent internet connection for the SCADA that we run that, you know, runs alarms to our.
Since it's one company that we have a deep partnership with, they use our right-of-ways. In exchange, we get five percent of their gross receipts. And now we're trying to move to this next level where we don't have like little outside bills here and there, but we have this bigger relationship involving all this. So it is kind of a lot. And it, it went that way just because, you know, it didn't make sense to have four or five different things, but kind of one place where everything's gathered and defined. So, but anyway, I didn't want to.
Mr. Mayor, a question. How much do we get right now in our franchise fee from them?
I don't think they're calling it a franchise fee anymore, but I just said five percent.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm just bringing up before we start talking dollars, one thing we could pull out of our pocket here is to say that right now the franchise fees are going straight into the general fund. And we could in our mind say that we could put the franchise fees towards this and see how that plans out. I just wanted to get that kind of in the back there.
Yeah, I mean, really quick, from the financing point, though, we are using those general funds for services now. So we will have to give something up to get this.
And it's not just free money. Our right-of-ways are valuable.
Well, um, I spent my career at utility regulation and the state of California, the whole nation, struggles with the digital divide. We're a low-income rural community from old people to school kids. There are a number of citizens that simply aren't connected to the internet. So as I listen, this project sounds like it's either for any visitors or open to all citizens. But what I get is if you're not downtown, this really isn't going to help. Is that right or wrong?
That's right.
Correct. You'd have to be in, you'd have to be within the network.
So.
Like within the network map that they.
But we, we have discussed the possibility of expanding on this model if it proves particularly effective. There's no reason we couldn't expand outward.
And that leads into the money talk, which is for this partner that you're calling Vive in the city of Dunsmere, have you sought to access the significant federal and state money available for rural broadband?
So, so I have looked into that, and part of the qualifications for that is that you have to have an area that's not served at all. Essentially, they'd have to be on dial-up or, or satellite. And currently, Vive serves, already is serving six hundred and ninety of our, our housing units. And so that's a, that's, we don't meet those qualifications anymore because they consider broadband to be coaxial cable. This is just kind of the next level of what, what internet speed can, can be.
Hey, hey, excuse me. So I had a lengthy discussion with Laurel Hartness, who's on, she's given up her Thursday night to listen in on this because she's a representative of the California Governor's Office of Small Business. And I had a lengthy discussion with Laurel and with Supervisor Valenzuela last night after the chamber mixer, and they both would like to be involved. Ed Valenzuela and I worked on this a decade ago with the Three-City Solution playing off of the buried cable. And I think now the view is there's no real advantage to the Three-City Solution. So now Dunsmere is on its own, and we're building whatever we're building. But I'm far more interested in serving underserved citizens than I am tourists. And I'm far more interested in having state and federal funds pay for it because we're small and rural and poor. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman. I can speak to a couple of those. Unfortunately, the, the biggest aspect of bridging the digital divide or, you know, bringing broadband to where it is not, is by any metrics, it is in Dunsmere. Subsidizing it is a broader conversation. We certainly have been talking about it with Vive, not directly with this project, but certain internet providers choose to apply their own subsidy. But subsidies are available for low-income households to apply from the federal government to subsidize their internet.
It would be certainly nice to roll that out if you're going to do this project.
It certainly.
It's already out.
Well, it, it is out. It'd be nice to promote it. It'd be nice to set up a way that you can apply for it. Wouldn't continue that. So the idea of the partnership with Vive would be, if we move forward with this, we're going to be working a lot setting it up. But they are the internet provider we use. We're promoting in the town. In exchange, of course, we want them, they've been open to the idea of helping us roll out all those programs that could be available. So subsidizing low-income households is something that does exist independent of the access. We have the access. To my knowledge, and I've looked into it to some extent, and I, I'm not an authority on this, I have not found anything that brings this, any federal funds for this type of access.
No, this is a, a commercial, what would be considered a commercial activity.
And, and I'm talking master engineering for our community. It's like building one room of a house and forgetting what the rest of the house is. With the notion technology, maybe all sell off. I don't know.
Yeah, well, this is a step forward that Dunsmere can make. That's quite a remarkable statement. I was, I was going into this somewhat skeptical. My own personal opinion on it, just because I, I didn't think we'd get it to a point where it was cost-effective or big enough. So we started out just the downtown. You know, what if we start with something? And then found out that, you know, well, we, you should have something up at the post office and grocery store. Particularly to serve people in our community. That's an important place where they might need that access.
But why shouldn't the grocery store pay for their own access?
This is, this is for their patrons.
This is for people to be able to move around in town and be able to pick up their phone and say, what am I going to do next? I'm going to order this. That's what it's for.
One of the major beneficiaries is of course anyone trying to do business in Dunsmere. It's a guest network that they don't have to provide. So it makes us a more business-friendly city for all the small businesses struggling to get things going. They have a built-in service for their guests. But I really like the idea that it also covers the children's park. That is a major priority, having coverage there. ECT hikers, you know, obviously they're not our core constituency, but it would certainly lend itself to be a hub for them if they have better access. But I'm happy to answer any further questions. This is still a work in progress. But we've gone far enough. We definitely need the full council's input.
Mr. Mayor, one other quick thing. So in, in terms of this idea of expanding this beyond the downtown, this is a real mix here, and we were sensitive to the idea that on one hand, the more we put out free stuff into the community, the less money they make because they have customers they want to sell to.
I, I think that's Councilman's exact.
I think we all get that.
Well, I didn't hear it. Okay.
No, it's, it's, this is something we can do now. We can certainly expand the access to it. Vive is not afraid that this is going to deteriorate from their business. I've heard it expressed, and I'm happy to jump in here, Tammy, if you'd like to. But heard expressed that there's a great deal of confidence that it just creates a higher profile for them as the internet providers in the area, as they are.
I'm fine with questions. Did you want to open this for public comment? Or do you need a decision today?
No, this is not for decision today unless, like, I think what we're looking for right now is we're not an official committee. We were just blessed by the council to bring something back. We have a city manager on board. I'd like to open up the public comment, but additionally, I think we just want direction to our actual staff to take this one over.
Okay.
Because it's obviously going to be important, and we're going to need a significant financial analysis to go over.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, thank you. To, excuse me, to perhaps answer, answer Councilman Earth's concerns about low-income households. There is a program available, and Vive does participate in that, where we help offset some of the costs for the broadband access. What I can do is I can have Piotkowski, who is our office manager, not just contact. Okay, if you'd like, so that you can distribute that information to the.
AT&amp;T and Verizon have the same thing.
Yeah.
But they choose not to publish it too awfully much.
Well, we're, we're pretty good about it. We, we put it out there. We put it out in most events, and we'd be happy to.
If we had our splash page, we could advertise it. There you go.
I just have to put yourself in the shoes of the people who don't have.
It's all good, you know. It's all good for the tourists and everything, and which is, you know, we're allowing tourists to find a better pizza or find, you know, whatever.
Spend money.
But, but the, if you can, if you're going to make it available to the people that can't have that, you know, that, that.
So just to procedurally, we're in public comment, and we've not gone back to discussion.
We're not quite yet.
He hasn't gavelled yet.
So would you, would you like me to have her comment?
Yes, please. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, now opening up the public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. See none? Oh, now closed public comment.
So just for the brevity of our discussion today, because we have two other items, and it's almost quarter two. I'm happy to make a motion to have you to work on a resolution to form an ad hoc committee to work on this. And I'd like to see the timeframe that you're hoping to have an end project considered for this, and then what the purpose of the group is, just so that we have that clear definition in what we're trying to achieve for this project. So I'm happy to do that if you two are willing to be on an ad hoc to work with staff on this.
Sure, we could certainly do that. I, I'd almost say we're at the point where I think if staff is comfortable taking over the project, they have, this is going to take a lot of time to get absolutely right.
Okay.
I think it might be better sticking from staff.
Yeah. And based on, based on all the information we've received and, you know, what, I had a presentation earlier this week, and and now this one, I feel that confident that Blake and I can, can handle that. So really what I'm looking for, for direction is just that this is something you guys want to continue to explore. And then we can bring back some kind of financial analysis here, hopefully late December, early January.
In terms of like our priorities with other pieces, so just keeping in mind that we do want to have a quarterly parks and rec meeting. I've asked a couple of other things. Is there an ability to put this as a lower priority to those pieces? I understand that we don't want to lose momentum, but I also want to keep in, in check how much we assign the staff.
It's, I think it's, we're fairly close. I just, I just need to tweak some, just double check, make sure where we're going to pull the funding from, what that looks like, and then bring that back to you guys to, as a proposal.
The idea is that we would want to, obviously, if we can have it in place before the next season, so sometime early spring. So that's kind of the general time.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping to have it in the spring because I think the timeline they gave us was a hundred and twenty days from the day we sign it, so.
So it was really January, we'd still have time.
Yeah, we'd be able to, they'd have it up and ready by April.
So I'll motion to continue the item to a future meeting.
Okay, all right. Well, could we have the more specifics to bring back the proposal for consideration?
Yeah, so motion to continue the item with the end product being a proposal for council consideration.
I now still second that. I, I do think the motion is fine. I do think, listening to the presentation, who is the paying customer? Well, it sounds like an amalgam of city offices and non-city users. So as finance looks at this, the budgeting, I don't think ought to be a mishmash. It's just like telephone service or utility service. If it's going to City Hall or the fire department, that should be in one budget. If it's for tourists and anybody that's downtown, that's a different budget.
Yeah, what we'll, what we'll look at is when we look at the financial analysis, we'll pull up, we've already kind of preliminarily started that based on what we're paying for internet over here and over there, advice, all of the, the locations where that's provided. You know, one of the things that I, you know, want to note is that we are including the resource center, which has been a kind of a core assistance center of the community. So, but we'll look at the areas that we're already paying and what that, that'll play into, you know, the normal budget, and then whatever else is above and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you.
Call the question? Called a question?
All right.
We didn't technically vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone from Vive. I really appreciate all the work and being here tonight.
Thank you. Sleep well.
Just, just for the sake of brevity tonight, I don't know how long you guys want to stay here, but I have to still write a grant. Could we move up item eleven C to be the next item, since we have to make a decision? And then we'll see how much time we have left for the California League of Cities discussion feedback thing.
That's fine with me. Brood.
Okay.
So Dave, why?
Okay. So we, we took out all these fire hydrants and we replaced all these fire hydrants. And I'm going to be put out there, blow it. I'd kind of like to have, be able to buy one of these old fire hydrants from my man cave. I would sign a piece of paper stating that I could have put it out in my front yard. And now I'm under the impression, I'm under the understanding that, and that's why I made this motion to, to, to we talk about this. Apparently somebody got one of these fire hydrants and put it in front of their house for deterrent on parking. Then the same person painted the curb red. Fire hydrant doesn't work. Why was that ever allowed? And two, if that is the reason why we, nobody can buy a used fire hydrant, that's absurd. I would sign a waiver, promissory note, whatever, that it would never be outside of the house. I'd like to purchase one of these. I know other people want. I know somebody else has got a bitchin' dog idea for a fire hydrant. It's a great idea. Why are people not allowed to buy a fire hydrant if they're not planning on putting it in their yard up next to a curb to where it looks like it's live and to fool people or whatever the case is?
Okay, but we have the answer.
Yeah, so, so I was had the discussion internally, and we originally were planning to do a raffle or something along that lines. And after a discussion with the fire chief and his strong concerns, there was a community south of us that had didn't matter whether they signed a paper or not, there was a fire hydrant that was placed in the front yard on a fire. And incidentally, it caused a delay in them to get water to a fire. And I, I don't know the outcome of that, but it has been something that has been brought up across the state through the fire network of the fire chiefs. And so from, for a public safety standpoint, not saying that you wouldn't, but what happens when you're no longer here and the fire hydrant is still out there? How do I make that a binding document? And so part of that challenge is from, from a public safety standpoint, we felt it was just best to send them to scrap metal. And, and that was kind of the, the recommendation from staff.
And I mean, in terms of the person who put a fire hydrant in the front of their house and painted a curb red, we do have ordinances already on the books that you cannot legally do that yourself. It has to be a city-approved red curb. So you, so you can report them as a code violation.
In their twenty years.
So.
I mean, if we adopt that, we have to do public comment now, won't we?
Yeah.
Open public comment on this item. Mr. Bailey?
Along with the discussion of what to do with the fire hydrants, I'd like you to know just last summer Antique Trader Magazine did a whole scenario on antique manhole covers. One of the most rare and one of the most valuable is from McLeod, California. The fact is that people right now are looking at history and are looking at things like that. I think what Kaiser says, there is a cash value for something like that, for an antique value if nothing else. And I would just have like to say that there are pictures, like I say, it went national. McLeod, California went national because of one particular man cover. I'm proud to be part of even having that opportunity to read that in a magazine. So I just like to bring that forward.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mind just for public comment? See none? Oh, closed public comment. Councilman.
I offer Big Dave a consolation prize, and I'm saying good luck to the city of Dunsmere, the historic bank of Dunsmere. I own about three tons of radiators that are all in the lobby because the radiators are redundant. And we did our best on the scrap metal market to sell them. Nobody wants them. So good luck. But if you'd like a ton of radiators.
Thanks, sir. All right. Like to call the question. Thanks, sir. All right. Like to call the question. Move. All right. Second by the Casey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? What carries? All right, uh, last item, Cal Cities Discussion and Feedback.
Put last, maybe just keep it brief.
I'll keep mine very brief. I had a misfortune of coming down to a really nasty cold the first day of the conference.
Oh, no.
Down there. So my conference, generally speaking, was not as productive as I would normally like. Uh, but a number of good insights and mostly it was really the joy to get to know Dustin and discuss the city with that concentrated time while attending some events to be inspired, but I'll defer to my more healthy colleagues.
Okay, am I going first? Go ahead. Okay. The first day we had our ethics training and then later on we went to the general session. Uh, in the general session, we met former mayor of Los Angeles, who is now the head of the task force, and I can't remember where it was. But just listening to this guy talk is his enthusiasm, his his drive, it was, it was infectious. I gotta tell you that. And then we got to meet throughout the conference, we got to meet a lot of keynote speakers and they all had something that I just touched you. I met Jill Ellis. She is a two two-time World Cup champion. This is the woman that made equal pay for sports people. The, I guess that's where she's.
She's the.
She's a coach.
Women's national team.
Yeah. And it was, it was really, this is her talk. And then the one thing, okay, I'm going to go down here. The I went to the one really thing was the session that I really looked forward the whole time was the worst fires in California. And I went down there and I listened to him and 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 I have my hand raised because I had a question. It wasn't really a question, it was a statement. And they got it worked out perfect. I went last. But I listened to these people from paradise talk about everything that they changed. The the new building materials in the houses, the roofings, everything that won't burn, the resiliency that this town has. They come up with the the updated evacuation plan. And I listened to a lot of the things that these guys said. A lot of them make sense, a lot of them, you know, on our houses. But then again, we are still, and this was my problem to them, is I got committed to on everything they did. I toured that, I believe in California cities. I seen firsthand, you know, I seen firsthand. That's one of my big things about our evacuation. But we are still under that thing and has to be that time, that day, that moment, depending on which way the wind's flowing, if we go north or south. So that's a big, big thing that is still in my mind, but seeing how this town bounced back and everything that they've changed to make sure that it don't happen again was 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 really cool and I learned a lot. There was a guy there that spoke and he talked about civic duties and civic leaders and doing your part. And then he was from the rare part of the California League of Cities. This guy was the president named Vince Williams of the National League of Cities. And he came out there and he said, if if anything else, you take away from this conference, take this. I love you and there's nothing you can do about it. And I thought that was a pretty good way to end the conference.
It was.
Anyways, that is my report.
Good report.
Ethics also, so I got that off my chest there. And that's where that question came up about public comment that I brought back. At the Sacramento Division Get Together, the meeting that we had, one of the things that I thought was really interesting is it was pointed out that they just had the election of officers for the division. And all of the officers now for the Sacramento Division are women except for the one male who's the secretary. And I thought that was really perfect in a certain symmetrical kind of way. I also was really impressed by Antonio Villas-Vilarega. I'd known about him, you know, being tuned into the news and he's obviously not mayor now, but you could just look at the person and and get a sense of what kind of strength and what kind of dynamism goes into leading a city the size of Los Angeles. So that really struck me. I also was impressed with Jill Ellis. And then moving on to the next day, we had a general session. The thing that struck me the most there was a report on the demographics of of the California, the changing demographics. And what really struck me was that on one hand, all of the different metrics that move towards what your population is are all going in the wrong direction. We decreased births, increased deaths. Um, and we're having people in particular that are lower in the income range leaving, lower in the education range leaving. So that's all part of the things that are going on right now.
Younger generation.
Younger generation too, exactly. We had the rural cities get together and that's been going on for about four years now. And I know Joan Freeman Smith was one of the people that created that. And the whole idea was to try and find a way to help the rural cities. And by rural, it's basically less than fifty thousand, I think, is the number. So it really does include a wide swath of different types of cities and that's what was apparent there. Uh, what was really striking was that everyone felt like all of the laws are being created without taking into mind the rural cities. Um, and you know, for instance, the whole green waste thing, it makes one sense for a large city with the resources to be able to make a change like that and and accomplish that. Uh, so one of the things that I I pointed out was one of the things that we could do is to develop a better way for the small cities of small rural cities of providing more guidance on what's available and how to get to there. There was also talk about having the Rural Caucus have a lobbyist hired specifically to help the the smaller cities. So that's kind of where the the conversation is going right now. And there's, you know, going to take it up with the Cal Cities about what we can do. But the larger point is, is that when you have a city staff like Dustin here, you really can't do the same level of research and tap into the same level of money and do the grant writing. So how can we reverse the process instead of making everyone go off and do a treasure hunt? How can we provide a process where it's already laid out for you and all you have to do is follow that path? And then finally, I also was really impressed with the the presentation from, it was from both Santa Rosa with the Tubbs Fire and Paradise with the Cal Fire Campfire. And they spent about a third of their time talking about the events themselves. And then the rest of it was talking about the whole rebuilding process. And so they're bringing their lessons learned and I I've talked with Ken Palphini and Sue Tabalero from Weed and and I know they're both tuned into the whole process right now of how they tap into the resources to rebuild the areas that have been burned. So that's pretty much what struck me the most in my.
Mr. Mayor, one point note. At the California League of Cities, we have three lobbyists that work for us all the time. Different people tell them what they're going to be, you know, what this is your project, this is your project. And what we're trying to do is because we can't be the Rural Caucus, doesn't work, but we could be a Rural Coalition. And we could have one of these lobbyists working for the rural cities so that we don't have to, we can be exempt from some of the things, the mandates that they're putting on big cities, is we can't facilitate some of the things that they're making like Los Angeles.
Yeah, I have to consider that the Rural Cities Working Group was a very positive experience. Mostly that it was a group of about seventy cities that all kind of had similar experiences where, hey, this conference is great in some ways, but a large portion of it just doesn't apply to us.
Doesn't apply.
Right. How do we get more of a voice within this organization? And they they almost, at least the room, when polled quickly, seemed to suggest, hey, we can go out and we could lead the league and form our own coalition if we don't find a bigger voice within the league. So it's too positive, but we'll see.
It was really.
The league heard us.
It was nice that when it started off, they they kind of got down at the beginning and kind of did a little circle because I didn't think there'd be many people showing up. And then all of a sudden, the place was pretty much full. So there was a lot of interest in the rural cities.
That's because at the first meeting, there were eight of us there, only eight of us. So it's gotten bigger.
I'll 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 add on to that. So um, you could remember what the his name or what he did. He was the infrastructure czar for the state. The governor appointed him to oversee a hundred billion dollars of infrastructure improvements within the state. So I I'll just kind of add on to that. I kind of did the comments on the it's the events that we kind of co-coattended on the general sessions, et cetera. Um, I did attend part of the public service ethics training, but then I kind of wanted to get a feel for everything. And and the the way it was designed, they kind of, they piled a whole bunch of stuff on top of each other, one right on top on the first day. So I I I jumped out of there and went to the city manager's department meeting and spent spent some time there, just kind of get a feel of the room. It's it's very interesting that there's only about, of all of the cities in the state, there was probably only seventy or eighty participants uh, in that group uh, that are taking roles in in leadership and and trying to move forward. City oriented objectives within the department from from the city manager's perspective. Um, then I also attended the lunch in Sacramento Valley Division. It was a great little luncheon, kind of got to, sat and ate lunch with Todd. So we kind of, you know, got to get that local connection going as well. Then on the second day, I had a number of phone call interruptions, but I went to the going green by twenty twenty-five, which is exactly what we talked about with solid waste. And and it's definitely time to let's circle the wagons and and kind of see where you guys are at and and where we can push forward and and what what caps we need to see. But from what I gathered, it's it's a monster. I've been dealing with this same kind of thing in Nebraska and Minnesota and Iowa. And it's it's a kind of a nationwide push, but every rural community seems to have the same, every rural area has the same issues. You know, when I was in Nebraska, we literally shipped our shipped our recyclables to Denver, which is three hour trip. And then the glass that we shipped to Denver would end up all the way across the country in St. Louis because that's the only place that took recycled glass in the entire central United States. You know, I mean, Denver's like, what, five thousand, five million people and they couldn't even accomplish to have. So so it's it's a nationwide issue. So it was just kind of a refresher of what I've seen already and and hopefully we can figure out a solution. I also attended one of the legal ones. They're a little tough. Um, it's on the essential breakdown for development impact fee programs. So how we how we handle development fees and all that stuff. And that was AB six oh two. And so basically, contact your attorney. I it 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 got, it was, it's very interesting, but it's very, very technical on how the calculations have to happen. And so when we start looking at those fees and we want to do anything, we we got to make sure we we just follow the rules. And I also kind of went and wanted to do a little bit of refresher on dealing with deferred maintenance and 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 those kind of things. As we know, we have a lot of deferred maintenance, you know, facilities, infrastructure, all those kind of things. And so I just kind of went and got a refresher of that and it was good, I, you know, you know, kind of good, good session. But just refine, refresh me on everything I thought I knew and and I still do. So.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I I will say that gone to a lot of them and they always said that the the Islanders did the karaoke. This year, the Islanders didn't do the karaoke. They had a dessert bar instead.
All right.
I swam around the harlot.
Okay, on a more serious note, let's move into Adam twelve, future agenda items. And I just want to say for the next meeting, I will not be able to attend that meeting. I have a family commitment that day. And our city manager.
Neither.
Oh, okay. And our city manager can't attend nor finance director. So I was wondering if.
Peter and I here just pulled the fort down.
Yeah.
And Wendy and Wendy.
No form. All right. But it was proposed, we move it special, cancel that meeting and do a special meeting on the following Monday, October, no, the prior Monday, October.
Seventeenth.
Our time.
I can't. I have a, I have a family or friends in town. I could do the Monday after.
The twenty-fourth.
Day through Sunday.
Do we have enough items?
I can't do Wednesday.
Do we have enough items to actually have a meeting?
Um, so I have, I have, I have two items coming coming up that are, they're grants, so they're they're time dependent. I mean, otherwise, otherwise we were strongly considering canceling that. But one of them, I think we can get by and push to November third. The other item, let me re-verify that. But I'm, I believe it was, I didn't have the documentation for this meeting, some.
I was going to say the Wai Rika Planning Commission meeting, which is usually Wednesday, the nineteenth, got moved to the week after. So I could do the nineteenth if you want to do a Wednesday. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and they got candidate candidate for him on the eighteenth.
Yeah. I, you know what, I can, I can try and make seventeen pork. I can make the seventeen.
If you don't make it, it's a grant. You could certainly read any comments you forward to us.
Yeah.
And it'll be a quick meeting.
Yeah, I'll I'll make the seventeen.
Is that a Monday?
That's Monday.
I don't know if I could be here, but I'll try.
Could we have a better time?
Monday and Wednesdays, I got lawyers. I got lawyers.
Well, I could do it during the day since I'm not working that day.
Yeah, I could do it during the day if that works for my mom.
I have something at noon I can't do on that day, but I'd do it the other time.
Peter says as long as it's afternoon.
All right, let's do three, three P M.
Three P M on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Okay. And then I don't know.
Instead of the twentieth, we're going to do three P M on the seventeenth.
All right. And then pre-agenda meeting for that meeting, I'll do a very quick one, will be Councilman George.
Okay.
Thursday.
Thursday at three.
Thursday.
Wait, no, Thursday, we won't be here.
The previous week.
Talk about next Thursday.
Yeah.
We will not be here.
Will not be here.
Okay.
We'll be back Sunday.
We can do it over the phone or I can move to the next person and come back. That sounds good.
Let's Juliana can.
I can do a Thursday, well, I can call into a Thursday at three.
Should be a lighter.
Yeah, cool. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Mr. Bailey, I appreciate your your fortitude.
That anyone's.
Well, that matters.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, because actually, well, here's what he reached back to me, the Notre Dame guy, reached back to me and said that.